Twenty-fifth, 2021, beginning at 6:30. May I have a roll call?
Jeff Silkey?
Yes.
Hillary Siskowski?
Here.
Kim Smith-Gulda is active with notice. Or she's on, Kim.
Oh, I'm here.
Yeah, you're here, sorry. I checked the right box now. Diane Salter here. Rebecca Haynes?
Here.
Melissa Clark is active with notice. Lisa Cabaluna?
Here.
Dr. Hydrick?
Here.
Jan Meek?
Here.
Carly Stone?
Here.
Diane Zanin?
Here.
And I'd just like to say that Kim Smith-Gulda is attending the meeting remotely. Her physical location is in Ortonville, Michigan. That's required for any board members that are attending remotely. So I want to make sure that everybody understands that. And now, may we please say this page will be just?
To the right of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we move on to public comments and questions, I know it's been mentioned to me, it's really helpful for those who are in attendance or that have attended before, a meeting to be reminded of the approach to public comments. And we've always enjoyed our opportunities to have discussions that I know I have, I know other board members have, in order to hear what our public has to say. With that, we've been kind of a treasure among our neighbors and such in that all of our comments and our conversations are typically held respectfully and following the guidelines. So, again, apologize to those who've been in attendance before if this is repetitive. However, the guidelines for public comments at meetings are that if you're attending the meeting virtually in which to address the board, you raise your hand electronically during the public comment agenda items by clicking "Raise Hand" in Zoom in the Zoom webinar, no control box. For those of you attending in person who wish to speak, please sign up on the sheet at the table near the entrance, which is right over there. And when the board calls your name during public comments, please stand and state your name, address, group affiliation. For example, if you have parents in the school district or children in the school district, are a community member, et cetera. Each person has three minutes to share their comments. To assist with tracking time, we'll set a timer for three minutes as each speaker begins speaking. Please finish your comments upon the three-minute mark. Please direct your statements to the board only. Generally, the board will not respond to public comments during the meeting. To ensure due process and respect of individual rights, the district maintains a formal process for handling complaints against individuals. A problem involving an individual or specific incident is best handled through administrative channels. Such matters should be reduced to writing and sent to Dr. Hydrick or me, the board president. Speakers are asked to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by your comments. While it is not our intent to stifle public comment, speakers should be aware that if your statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally responsible. If you are unsure of the legal ramifications of what you are about to say, we urge you to consult first with your legal advisor. Thank you for listening and thanks for everybody's attendance tonight. And with that, our next agenda item is public comment and questions on Agenda Business, whatever's presented on Agenda Business.
I have a very great question. I just was wondering, where can I find more information on what's on your agenda? Like I was trying to find it online and there wasn't very much information to look at about the agenda. I don't even know what I'm looking for.
About the agenda?
Or what you guys have actually been talking about ever.
It's posted on the website?
Yeah, I mean, I tried clicking on different things, but I didn't see very much. There wasn't really, like, anything attached to anything.
What specifically were you looking for tonight?
Well, tonight, I was really looking at the general fund accounts payable, and that was literally just like a spreadsheet. And I just guess I was just kind of hoping for things to be a little bit more, I don't know, on there.
Well, in the future, if you have a question, by all means, reach out to Dr. Hydrick or to me. And if there's something that's available, which is available, if it's on the agenda, we'd be happy to see what we can do to help.
Perfect.
Okay? You're welcome.
I'll check here.
All set there?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Do not get many hands raised.
Okay. Now we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank all the employees and staff. It's been a fantastic start this school year. We shifted our organization and planning over the summer to accommodate 93% in-person learners and 7% virtual learners, in contrast to last year. Our administrative team and counselors, teachers and support staff have prepared classrooms and schedules across the grade levels to accommodate the shift. We want to thank all our teachers for that and our administrative team. I also want to thank our food service team. They continue to work all year round to prepare meals. And currently, they're servicing 250 meals for breakfast every single day and 1,600 lunches every single day. So that's two-thirds of our student school population. So thank you to food service. Also want to thank the transportation team. The ridership has increased significantly in relationship to the pandemic. And so this school year, we have 1,500 students being serviced by our transportation principal and the buses. So I'm going to thank that team as well. Finally, I want to acknowledge Deanne Burr for the custodians and Mark Evans as the lead maintenance for all the preparation that they have done this school year to pull it off to a successful start. So I can appreciate all our employees. Next, I just want to remind the community and parents about our upcoming bond forums. Beginning at the end of this month, the 28th, we have our three sessions set from 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. And again, 6:00 p.m. for in-person, and that will be held at the ITech. And we're going to rotate the in-person bond forums. So it's ITech on the 28th, and then on October 12th, it's going to be at Harvey Swanson. And then October 26th, we're going to rotate back to the board office, our boardroom, for the in-person meeting for any community member, any parent, to learn more about our bond program for the vote on November 2nd. Yeah, that's what I have on the school district updates, and then I have a COVID update as well.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions on the board regarding the update that Dr. Hydrick just provided before the bond document? Thank you.
For the COVID report, we're beginning our third week of school. We have nine positive cases across our buildings. We do not have any cases at Oakwood, but primarily at the high school and middle school. And we have a case at Harvey Swanson. So the process continues of notifying families at those buildings when we have a positive case. Our quarantine numbers are down in relationship to the COVID positive cases this year. And that's good, mainly due to the vaccination status of middle school and high school opportunities that keeps quarantine numbers down. Vaccinated do not have to quarantine if they do not display symptoms. So our nine positive cases that we currently have is giving 16 students full quarantine status. So our administrative team continues to work through the quarantine procedures with the Oakland County Health Department. We're changed up a bit. We have some new rules. And we're working through those jointly with OCHD. And we're finding some success with it. In our zip code area, according to Oakland County Health Department statistics, we have seen a steady increase in the number of positive cases. But so far, we're much below the cases we've had in the past in the spring and back in the winter. So we'll continue to monitor the data. I think that's what's most important, is to look at a trend long-term. And so we're just in the beginning with two weeks of school. What does this look like three, four, or five weeks down the road? So we'll continue to monitor that data. Currently, we do not have any outbreaks in any of our buildings. But if and when we do, we did have two outbreaks last year. We will notify those families by an additional letter sent home to them about the outbreak in this school building. We look at some vaccination data in our area. These are Oakland County Health Department statistics. There are 16 plus in this area. And our zip code area is hovering in the 50% to 60% range for full vaccination status. And Oakland County overall is reporting since September 12th that the vaccination status overall in the county is at 68%. That's some data that I pulled today. And that's where we are as a district. And we'll continue with our administrative team to work on quarantine close contact steward process.
Thank you. Does anybody on the board? Kim, I want to make sure and reach out to you as well, not to be forgotten. Does anybody have any questions or concerns from the board or Dr. Hydrick based on his report? Okay. Thank you. We're moving on to approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support, support someone, support? Bart, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Hillary?
Here. Or yes, sorry.
Yes, sorry. Kim?
Guns?
Jeff?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Diane? Yes. Lisa?
Yes.
All yeses.
Thank you. All right. Now we move on to what is item seven on the agenda, which is information and discussion items, beginning with the education report from Carly Stone.
Good evening. Well, I'm sharing on behalf of a joint effort here. So I am just getting started, but this truly was a team effort. Jane's going to speak about our community education programs this summer. And Diane is also going to share some really great information about Camp Fox, our extended summer program. It's all about COVID, so. All right, so I'll get us started talking about our academic programs. This summer, we ran quite a few academic programs. The first that kicked us off was our high school parat recovery program. Seventy-three students participated in our parat recovery program, bringing the 87 credits. We did run a middle school summer program this year in August for three weeks. We had 22 students enroll in ELA, 24 students enroll in math. Rebecca Holberg was our ELA teacher. And Angela Stover was our math teacher. Rebecca actually attended a conference and just right after school got out to learn more about how we could create a strong summer program. As a result, we actually received a grant of numerous free fiction and nonfiction reading books that we were able to utilize through the summer program. And they did a lot of reading and writing. Their primary focus was on nonfiction. And they studied about the Summer Olympics, which is a good development and progress. And Angela, as you guys know, was a former interventionist at our elementary building. So many of the students she serviced were students that she knew from the elementary. And they focused a lot on rational numbers, fractions, all that fun stuff that never goes away in math, huh? To hit the third grade level. Transportation was provided for these students. It was in conjunction with their elementary program. We did also speak in the spring about our Oakland Muse Innovation Lab that ran through Oakland schools. It was hosted at Clarkson High School. Nine of our students participated in that. That was for students in grades six through 12. And transportation was also provided from the district. And then Camp Learn is what we called our elementary program, which was ran and planned by Mary Beth Pinter. Absolutely phenomenal job. This was a three-week, three-day-a-week program for five hours each day. We serviced 106 elementary students. We had eight classes, both to do math there. It was a really nice class size. Certified staff and 11 classroom assistants. We had daily lessons in reading, writing, math, and science. We're really integrating the science into our reading and our writing. As a result, we had three themes, one for each week of the summer. One was outdoor exploration, one was space, and one was water. And again, transportation was provided. Thank you to the transportation department. So it was in conjunction with the middle school program. Some highlights of that particular camp was a reader's theater that the students participated in. They assembled and shot a bunch of cool different rockets. Tons of science experiments. You can see a little bit of the Tulio Bob Foley making a mess over there outside. A lot of community buildings, some celebrations. And students wrote about a square foot that they explored and thought.
Okay. I'm up. And the continuing education summer camp, we really, we were able to expand our programs due to our grants, our new federal grants that we had. We, our first one was Challenge Island, and we offered eight different sections and 15 hours per section. And the themes for those camps were Pet Palooza, Whirl and Cruise, and extreme sports. And we had 149 students participate. Yes. Camp Invention is new to us this summer. Wonderful camp. Our teachers, five Brandon teachers participated in this, which was wonderful. It was a week-long camp, 32 hours. Daily topics included open mics, solar bot, road rally, and duck chuck. Again, five of our teachers, Jenny Geiselman, was the kind of onsite, and she helped plan that. And 80 students participated in this one-week camp. And then coding. Bob Larson is our coding. He does this after school, and he's been doing this for about three years for us. And he had a couple partners this year, Mandy Goodlow and... Who's the other one? Rebecca, maybe?
Colbert?
Is it Rebecca Colbert? Yeah. Two sections, 20 hours each section, beginners coding, using scratch and coding. Thirty-two students. And again, we had three teachers. The kids really enjoyed Bob's class. We had our math and tutoring that we've been running for four years now. And we offered four tutoring sections, 15 hours of total teacher time, reading and math, differentiated help using various software programs. We had 26 in-person tutoring, plus we offered a virtual, plus 10 virtual students, all three, three Brandon teachers. And then we also offer our GRAS workbook. And 59 students participated in the GRAS workbooks as reading and math. And then our math-science, 10 sections were offered, 20 hours total per section. And we did Digging for Dinums, Eureka the Inventors Camp, Nassau Future Explorers, and Nassau Innovators. And we had 197 total students participate in the math-science programs. We also, this summer, were able to do BGYA, wanted to partner with the district in some sort of a summer program or summer pay for something. So we came up with a swim camp. And so they sponsored, they paid for a three-day swim camp. 20 students participated ages nine to 14. We talked about water safety games and beginning swim. So that was a start. We're going to, we're trying to do something this fall with BGYA as well. So in summary, we ran camps from June 21st through August 26th, with the exception of two weeks around the Fourth of July. There was something always going on. We had 553 students participating. The tuition this summer was free for all camps. And we used some of our federal money, like I mentioned. And it cost us, in federal money, $86,742, or about $157 on average per camper.
And my office is at Harvey Swanson, where a lot of those camps were taking place, as well as the educational format. All the students had fun. No matter what they were doing, they were in the hall. They were showing me what they were making. And it was a wonderful summer. So in addition, we worked with all the camps and the educational programs through Camp Fox. So students who were going to Camp Fox, Liz Penny, Penny Green, and Brenda King, and a couple other people were helping them out. They would walk them down to their camp. They'd bring them there. Whatever was going on, she had this great spreadsheet that she had the students and where they should go, which days and which weeks they were going. And it was great. But they also had their own field trips. They went to Clintonwood Flash Park. They went to Lake Cali Splash Park. They went to Nature Center, another water park, and another splash park. They always enjoy those camps, those field trips that they go on. They took 11 students back and forth to different summer camps and students, and three students back and forth to summer schools. So we had about 45 students involved with our Camp Fox. It was awesome, in addition to the other camps. And we also held a preschool playgroup. This has been going on for a couple years now. It's grant-funded. Were children zero to five with their parents. And they basically, this year, which was awesome, they played in the new playground, on the preschool playground. And we had a perfect, every single Tuesday, they were able to be outside this summer.
Oh, nice.
They had so much fun. So they had regular, 15 families attended with 24 students. And in July, three new babies came and visited. So very fun. I happened to be there that day. And then we always have a special population program. It's our fed school year. And we need services for our students for four weeks in July. OTP, speech, and then evidence of development. We had eight students involved with that. We also supported all the camps, educational and other camps. If there were students with special needs who needed extra support, we supported them through some of our staff.
Well, yeah, to kind of wrap up, another great feature we were very thoughtful about, we included the meetup program to every camp or school opportunity this summer. So anybody that participated and was here at that time got a free breakfast and a free lunch as well. You can imagine how many meals that was. If you kind of, how many students we were able to service this summer through a variety of different camps. And then lastly, just a couple quotes that we had heard as a result. But I'm so grateful to Brandon for all of these programs this summer. My kids said this is the best summer they've ever had. And then on the Bible, guys, the elementary program at Irish Summer School never had to end. This is so fun.
That's the end of our? Thank you very, very much to Carly, Jan, Diane. This is incredible. I mean, for all of your efforts to provide these opportunities, to expose our little ones to all of these learning opportunities. It's just invaluable. And the high participation obviously speaks so greatly to the programming itself, to you guys as leaders of these teams, to our teachers, our food service providers, just everyone in the school family that makes this all happen. As a board, I don't have words to express how much we appreciate what goes into it and also acknowledge everything we don't know that goes into it, because I know it's a ton of planning and a ton of work. So thank you to everyone. I don't know if we have any teachers on, but please, if you are passing along to the teachers and everybody else who makes this happen. Thank you so much. It's fantastic for our school families. Thank you. And also, the reading program, where students got books and... Oh, yeah, yeah. Amazing. It was just absolutely amazing. It was like eight books, I think. And one every week, a common mail. So thank you. That was wonderful.
Did you hear that, Carly?
I did.
Okay, I didn't.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, thank you for supporting. That was really, really awesome this summer.
Fantastic. Does anybody have any further questions or comments from the board on the education report? Kim, are you good?
Good.
Okay. All right. Now we have item number eight on our agenda. Includes our action items. And the first is the approval of the high school band trip to Florida. May I have a motion, please?
Remove the Brandon Board of Education approve the out-of-state trip to Orlando, Florida in November 10th through the 15th, 2021, as presented.
Support? Thank you. Is there any discussion on this matter? Okay, standing on. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Diane Salter? Yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Kim Smith-Gulda? Hillary Siskowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silkey?
Yes.
Lisa Cabaluna?
Yes. Thank you very much. The motion passes. Our next item...
That's Ross.
Oh, hey, Ross. You're welcome.
Thanks. Bye.
Bye. I should know that, I apologize. Our next item is approval of the middle school band choir trip to Mackinac Island. Remove the Brandon Board of Education approve the overnight seventh and eighth grade band choir overnight trip to Mackinac Island May 6th through 7th, 2022, as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this action item? I know. I know. So hearing none, no further discussion. May I have a roll call vote?
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter? Yes. Kim Smith-Gulda?
Yes.
Hillary Siskowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silkey?
Yes.
Lisa Cabaluna?
Yes. The motion passes. Thank you. The last action item that we have is approval of the human resource report. May I have a motion, please?
Remove the Brandon Board of Education approve the human resource report as presented.
Support?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. May I have a roll call vote?
Yeah, Kim Smith-Gulda?
Yes.
Jeff Silkey?
Yes.
Diane Salter? Yes. Hillary Siskowski?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
And Lisa Cabaluna?
Yes. The motion passes. Thank you. Okay. The next item we have is for those who have signed on the sheet here or raises their hand on the Zoom call. We have citizens input.
Yes, you can. Hi, everybody. You already know me, Dani Bartos. Some other girl. I just wanted to say, I was, I just have a few questions, I guess. I heard that there's been some cases, and I'm just wondering, are most of these kids vaccinated that have had the cases, that have had COVID? I'm just curious, because my little cousin is quarantining right now because she's unvaccinated. So she's actually being discriminated against. And it doesn't make her feel very good that out of the 15 kids sitting at the roundtable, because she was one of two that was unvaccinated, all the other kids get to continue to go to school, even though they can still get it and still spread it, even though they're vaccinated, they get to still stay in school, and she has to be home for ten days. So I think that you guys really need to consider, when is this going to be put to a stop? Is this going to be before the rest of our lives? Are we going to be masking these kids? When does this end? And if it's per the guidelines, we'll never hit that threshold if they're saying that COVID is like a flu shot, like the flu. We'll never get to below 2% or whatever. The flu spreads like wildfire. So if this continues to spread like that, it's not going to just go away. So do we have an end game? Is there an end in sight? Like, is there an end in sight? Is this going to keep going? Are you guys being, are they withholding money from you if you guys decided not to follow along with these mask guidelines? I mean, have you guys been getting emails, calls? Are there kids who are getting headaches? Because I know that I'm hearing about headaches and nosebleeds. I'm hearing about my people's kids coming home so drowsy, lethargic, not feeling good, not acting themselves. And then on the weekend when they're masked, their kindergarteners are right back to normal. So I'm just wondering, like, is this preventative measure we're taking actually going to be, like, preventing anything? We're still having outbreaks. I mean, some of you guys, I'm not going to say too much, but if you can't wear a mask during this, but you want a kid to wear a mask for eight hours a day and even longer if they're riding the bus, because the bus rides are longer now. That's a long time for these kids to be masked up in their kindergarteners, first graders. I mean, I don't know how many times I have to say this, these preschoolers. Like, I hope that you guys don't think that this is just no big deal because to the parents it is. We feel helpless. I'm hearing it every day. The parents are feeling helpless. They do not want to send their kids like this, especially the young ones. The high schoolers, I feel like they're holding on to make their own choices on so many things. I mean, so I feel like we should let them make their own choices. But I feel it's time for us all to just keep calling the health department. Does the health department know about these things that the kids are going through? The nosebleeds kids are getting at night, the headaches the kids are having? Do they know about all the symptoms kids are having from the masks? Maybe they're not hearing enough from the superintendent and the board saying like, these masks aren't, they might be preventing something, but they're also causing something. So maybe you guys at the board and the superintendent can reach out to my Oakland County Health Department. No. It's causing issues also. Thank you. They don't answer.
Thank you for your comments.
No.
No.
They might email later.
All right. The next person we have is Jen Gilman.
Hi.
Did I pronounce that right?
Yes, you did.
Okay, very good.
Hi, I'm Jen. I did not come with anything other than questions and I've never been to a war meeting. So now I was told that you can't answer them. So I'm just going to get them out there. I'm going to kind of follow up with her. We do Girl Scouts, we do different things, and it is the one common theme that I have parents that literally will cry to me. And I'm not going to get emotional because I can feel their pain, but they're concerned. And with Oxford, of course, we've heard that they are, you know, the board, the different teachers are conducting the adverse effects of what these kids, they're getting the feedback and they're taking it. I know y'all's hands are probably a little more tied because it's the health department. Again, these parents all be here as the Cider Mill or the Facebook so that, you know. So again, we don't always have everything to go off of, but that's why we come here. It's like, do we pull them? Do we send them? Most parents want to send their kids because what kid doesn't want a school experience? But I don't know about y'all, this is not the experience I had as a kid. And I truly believe that psychologically, we are screwing up these kids. Now, again, not y'all. Again, you just work here. I always said I just work here. But I do think that there is power numbers. And I do believe that as educators, y'all have a lot bigger voice than a lot of us believe to believe. Like, you know, and I don't know anything, so I'm not going to say no at all, but there's got to be some. Like she said, there's got to be an end game. There's got to be, there's got to be something that we can do as adults to protect these kids because I know they don't like them. My daughter does not want to go to public school. I pulled her from preschool because she said, I don't want to wear a mask, mommy. I just don't want to. I had to pull her from gymnastics because, and again, this is all let up, but they don't do that anymore. So I guess my question is, how can I take, you know, you see the pictures, these football games and everything else. I mean, gymnastics, ballet, we can go to all these meetings with our masks. So why is it that COVID only exists in the public school but not at these other? So again, questions, I'm not here to give you all, I've seen videos of people at these and they're like, study show. That's not me. I'm just here simply asking as adults, again, some people might be for this. But also, I guess my concern was a little bit, I see these nurses, these, what were they called, vaccination specialists. And I know that I've heard over in Lake Orion, there's four more nurses. What is, you know, my mom's eight years old and she said back in their day, they line them up at the gym and her mother would tell her from the vaccination nurses, um, tell them you gotta go to the bathroom. And go home. She's never been vaccinated. She's eight years, in good shape. But it's not part-fetched. And so is that our, is that what we're looking at? Is wondering, well, we're locked out of these schools, our kids are going to be in here getting vaccinated. Again, one would look and say, that's crazy, but is it? Like, you know, one would say, oh, this is crazy. So again, just concerned, I come as a concerned parent for all the heartache I see with parents. And y'all are losing more and more. I mean, I can't tell you how many people have reached out, like, I go to school. And they're like, Jen, you know, what are you doing? And I've told them, we've started co-ops. People are co-op-ing and we're doing, and I don't think it's so bad. You know what I mean? Like, kids want to be at school, but what kid wants to run around with, you know? I don't know. So, so. Good timing. Thank you very much. Oh, is this your paper?
Okay. All right. Those are all of the individuals who signed to speak during citizens input. Do we have any hands raised remotely?
We don't have any hands raised. No.
We do not.
No hands.
Okay. Very good. Very good. All right. With that, we will move on to item 10, which is our closed session. Moving into closed session for negotiations. May I have a motion?
Remove the Brandon Board of Education approved to enter closed session for negotiations.
Second. Thank you. May I have a roll call?
Jeff Zilke.
Yes.
Hillary Siskowski.
Yes.
Kim Smith Kula. Diane Salter, yes. Rebecca Haynes.
Yes.
Lisa Kavaluna.
Yes. We are now moving into closed session for negotiations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you guys. I appreciate your comments.
Information about Camp Fox, our extended summer program, all that playgroup stuff. All right, so I'll get us started talking about our academic programs. This summer, we ran quite a few academic programs. The first that kicked us off was our high school credit recovery program. Seventy-three students participated in our credit recovery program, bringing eighty-seven credits. We did on a middle school summer program this week in August for three weeks. We had 22 students enroll in ELA, 24 students enroll in math. Rebecca Colbert was our ELA teacher and Angela Stover was our math teacher. Rebecca actually attended a conference in, just right after school got out to learn more about how we could create a strong summer program. As a result, we actually received a grant of numerous free fiction and nonfiction reading books that we were able to utilize through the summer program. And they did a lot of reading and writing. Their primary focus was on nonfiction and they studied about the summer Olympics. And that was very relevant and good for them. And Angela, as you guys know, was a former interventionist at our elementary building. So many of the students she serviced were students that she knew from the elementary. And they focused a lot on rational numbers, fractions, all that fun stuff that never goes away in math, continue at the second grade level. Transportation was provided for these students. It was in conjunction with their elementary program. We did also speak in the spring about our Oakland Youth Innovation Lab at Wainwood Oakland Schools. It was hosted at Clarkson High School. Nine of our students participated in that. That was for students in grades six through 12. And transportation was also provided from the district. And then Camp Learn is what we called our elementary program, which was ran and planned by Mary Beth Pinter, absolutely phenomenal job. This was a three-week, three-day-a-week program for five hours each day. We serviced 106 elementary students. We had eight classes, both to do math there. It's a really nice class size. Certified staff and 11 classroom assistants. We had daily lessons in reading, writing, math, and science, but really integrating the science into our reading and our writing. As a result, we had three themes, one for each week of the summer. One was outdoor exploration, one was space, and one was water. And again, transportation was provided, thank you to the transportation department, so it was in conjunction with the middle school program. Some highlights of that particular camp was a reader's theater that the students participated in. They assembled and shot a bunch of cool different rockets. Tons of science experiments. You can see a little bit of a tulip out of Foley making a mess over there outside. A lot of community buildings and celebrations and students wrote about a square foot that they explored and coded.
Okay, I'm up. And the continuing education summer camp, we really, we were able to expand our programs due to our grants, our new federal grants that we had. We, our first one was Challenge Island and we offered eight different sections and 15 hours per section. And the themes for those camps were Pet Palooza, Whirl and Cruise, and Extreme Sports. And we had 149 students participate. Yes. Camp Invention was new to us this summer. Wonderful camp. Our teachers, five Brandon teachers participated in this, which was wonderful. It was a week-long camp, 32 hours. Daily topics included open mics, solar bot, road rally, and duck chuck. Again, five of our teachers, Jenny Geeselman was the kind of onsite and she helped plan that. And 80 students participated in this one-week camp. And then coding, Bob Larson is our coding. He does this after school and he's been doing this for about three years for us. And he had a couple partners this year, Mandy Goodlow and, what was the other one? Rebecca, maybe? Is it Rebecca Colbert? Yeah. Two sections, 20 hours each section, beginners coding, you can scratch and coding. Thirty-two students and again, we had three teachers. So the kids really enjoyed Bob's class. We had our math and tutoring that we've been running for four years now. And we offered four tutoring sections, 15 hours of total teacher time. Reading and math, differentiated help using various software programs. We had 26 in-person tutoring, plus we offered a virtual, plus 10 virtual students. All three, three Brandon teachers. And then we also offer our graphs workbook and 59 students participated in the graphs workbook, that's reading and math. And then our math-science, 10 sections were offered, 20 hours total per section. And we did digging for dynomes, Eureka the Inventors Camp, Nassau Future Explorers, and Nassau Innovators. And we had 197 total students participate in the math-science programs. We also, this summer, were able to do, BGYA wanted to partner with the district in some sort of a summer program or summer pay for something. So we came up with a swim camp. And so they sponsored, they paid for a three-day swim camp. Twenty students participated ages nine to 14. We talked about water safety games and beginning swim. So that was a start. We're going to, we're trying to do something this fall with BGYA as well. So in summary, we ran camps from June 21st through August 26th. With the exception of two weeks around the Fourth of July, there was something always going on. We had 553 students participating. The tuition this summer was free for all camps. And we used some of our federal money, like I mentioned, and it cost us, in federal money, $86,742 or about $157 on average per camper.
And my office is at Harvey Swanson, where a lot of those camps were taking place, as well as the educational format. All the students had fun. No matter what they were doing, they were in the halls, they were telling me what they were making. It was a wonderful summer. So in addition, we worked with all the camps and the educational programs through Camp Fox. So students who were going to Camp Fox, it was Penny, Penny Green, and Brenda King and a couple other people were helping them out. They would walk them down to their camp, they'd bring them there, whatever was going on. She had this great spreadsheet that she had the students and where they should go, which days and which weeks they were going. And it was great. But they also had their own field trips. They went to Clintonwood Splash Park, they went to Lake Kelly's Sports Park, we went to Nature Center, another water park and another splash park. They always enjoy those camps, those are the field trips that they go on. They took 11 students back and forth to different summer camps and students and three students back and forth to summer schools. So we had about 45 students involved with our Camp Fox. It was awesome in addition to some of the other camps. And we also held a preschool playgroup. This has been going on for a couple of years now, it's grant funded. For children zero to five with their parents. And they basically, this year, which is awesome, they played in the new playground on the preschool playground. So, and we had a perfect, every single Tuesday, they were able to be outside this summer.
Oh nice.
They had so much fun. So they had regular 15 families attended with 24 students and in July, three new babies came and visited.
Oh wow.
Very fun. I happened to be there that day. And then we always have a population program. It's our third school year and we need services for our students for four weeks in July. OTP, TPS, and then education development. We had eight students involved with that. And we also supported all the camps, educational and other camps. If there were students with special needs who needed extra support, we supported them through some of our staff members.
Well, yes, to kind of wrap up, another great feature we were very thoughtful about. We included the meetup and eat up program to every camp or school opportunity this summer. So anybody that participated and was here at that time got a free breakfast and a free lunch as well. You can imagine how many meals that was if you count how many students we were able to service this summer through a variety of different camps. And then lastly, just a couple of quotes that we had heard as a result. But I'm so grateful to bring in all of these programs this summer. My kids said this is the best summer they've ever had. And then on the Bible guys, the elementary programs at Irish Summer School never had to end. This is so fun.
Fantastic.
That's the end of our.
Thank you very, very much to Carly, Jan, Diane. This is incredible. I mean, for all of your efforts to provide these opportunities to expose our little ones to all of these learning opportunities. It's just invaluable. And the high participation obviously speaks so, so greatly to the programming itself. To you guys as leaders of these teams, to our teachers, our food service providers, just everyone in the school family that makes this all happen. As a board, I don't have words to express how much we appreciate what goes into it. And also acknowledge everything we don't know that goes into it because I know it's a ton of planning and a ton of work. So thank you to everyone. I don't know if we have any teachers on, but please, if you want to pass it along. To the teachers and everybody else who makes this happen. Thank you so much. It's fantastic for our school families. Thank you.
And also, real quick, the reading program where students got books and.
Oh yeah, yeah.
Amazing. It was just absolutely amazing. It was like eight books, I think. One every week would come in the mail. So thank you. That was wonderful.
Did you hear that Carly?
I did.
Okay, I didn't.
Thank you. Yeah. No, thank you for supporting. That was really, really awesome this summer.
Fantastic. Does anybody have any further questions or comments from the board on the education report? Tim, are you good?
Good.
Okay. All right. Now we have item number eight on our agenda, includes our action items. And the first is the approval of the high school band trip to Florida. May I have a motion, please?
Remove the Brandon Board of Education approved the out of state trip to Orlando, Florida in October 10th through the 15th, 2021 as presented.
Support. Thank you. Is there any discussion on this matter? Okay, seen none. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Diane Salter, yes. Rebecca Haynes.
Yes.
Kim Smith Kula. Hillary Siskowski.
Yes.
Jeff Zilke.
Yes.
Lisa Kavaluna.
Yes. Thank you very much. The motion passes. Our next.
Thank you everyone.
That's Russ.
Oh, hey Russ. You're welcome.
Thanks. Bye.
Bye. I should know that, I apologize. Our next item is approval of the middle school band choir trip to Mackinac Island.
Remove the Brandon Board of Education approved the overnight seventh and eighth grade band choir overnight trip to Mackinac Island, May 6th through 7th, 2022 as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this action item? I know, I know. So hearing no further discussion, may I have a roll call vote?
Rebecca Haynes.
Yes.
Diane Salter, yes. Kim Smith Kula. Hillary Siskowski.
Yes.
Jeff Zilke.
Yes.
Lisa Kavaluna.
Yes. The motion passes. Thank you. The last action item that we have is approval of the human resource report. May I have a motion, please?
Remove the Brandon Board of Education approved the human resource report as presented.
Support.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. May I have a roll call vote?
Yeah, Kim Smith Kula.
Yes.
Jeff Zilke.
Yes.
Diane Salter, yes. Hillary Siskowski.
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes.
Yes.
And Lisa Kavaluna.
Yes. The motion passes. Thank you. Okay. The next item we have is for those who have signed on the sheet here or raises their hand on the Zoom call. We have citizens input.
Hi, everybody. You already know me, Dani Bartos. Some other girl. I just wanted to say. I was, I just have a few questions, I guess. I heard that there's been some cases and I'm just wondering.